Tuesday, uh, is it, should I start over, IT? Okay. Welcome to the County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, April 19th. A regular county board meeting. You gotta call the order. We've, uh, you see the evidence, Corporation Council. No, you gotta do it, Lisa, right? You start off.
Uh, let's see, so, County Board of Supervisors, April 19th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on April 11th, 2022, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of April 11th, 2022. In addition, on Monday, May 11th, 2022, at 3:45 PM, the Office of the County clerk distributed copies of such meeting of notice of, of meetings to supervisors and media via email or mail.
Corporation Council, does that constitute a proper notice? Roll call.
Rattles.
Here.
Doug Roddy.
Here.
Eve Warnold. He's on, he's on, okay, he's on. Ryan Wood.
Here.
Stacy LeBlanc, here. Dan Ro.
Here.
Barbara. McAfee?
Yes, okay.
Here.
Karen Kelly?
Here.
Tim O'Connell?
Here.
Amy Middleton?
Here.
Jay Lou?
Here.
Denise Lally or Gray? Here. Russ Arkham?
Here.
TJ, is it Simonis?
Simonis.
Simonis.
Here.
And Don Monopride?
Here.
And Chair Chris Nelson?
Here.
And would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, number five, disclosures of board members' conflicts of interest during the, uh, there are new supervisors that's there, if there's anything on the agenda during the board meeting, you guys just acknowledge that. Number six, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Uh, number seven, matters offered for adoption of the consent agenda. Consideration corrections to the published minutes from March 15th, 2022 county board meeting. The motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment up here.
We have two written public comments at the end of March, uh, which were emailed to all of the existing supervisors because the candidates, the new supervisors hadn't received those. We did make photocopies of those, those are on your desks today.
Thank you. Um, so next item agenda is number nine. Now after that agenda item, uh, the Corporation Council would like us to take us, you guys to take a small recess for him to discuss with the newly elected chair. So just a short recess. And then you guys will get back to business. I just wanted to let you guys know that. Um, organizational matters. For the board term 2022 through 2024, uh, we would take a motion for election of county board officers.
I would nominate like we did last round. Jay, John, and Russ is chairman. Jay is chairman, John is first vice chair, and Russ is second vice chair.
I second the motion.
We have a second, so we have a first and a second, that would be on the floor for discussion. No, I don't think you can amend, Corporation Council?
Theoretically, he can amend the motion. If he makes a motion and it gets seconded, and then the amendment would, similar to amendment to any other motion, um, so.
On this, on, on this, you can do an amendment to this?
Can, it can get very confusing very quickly, so, um, can be done, but I would recommend that.
You vote on this? I mean, I think you'd be better off, right? That we'd vote on this, and then if it votes down, then you'd make a new motion.
We could do it that way, but again, uh, there has been, Doug wants to make a motion and it is appropriate.
You can do it, okay. Alright, so you would like to make a amendment to Brad's, um, motion?
Would.
Okay, what is that?
I would like to amend second chair and nominate Amy Middleton.
So you would, you would remove John?
Jay Lou, no, that's second chair, Jay Lou, John, and Amy.
Oh, and Amy instead of Russ? Okay, so that's, that's an amendment, is there a second to that amendment? So, original motion is Jay is chair, John is vice chair, Russ is second vice chair. You're making amendment to change out Russ for Amy. Is there a second to that?
Second.
There's a second to that.
I'm sorry, oh, thank you.
Barbara. So that would be up for, is there any discussion on that amendment?
So.
Go ahead.
This is the best. I think I'd like to amend that we vote on two and three separate. That we started with the chair. Then we vote for whoever, and then work down to the first chair and the second chair. And if there's nominations.
Well, that, that's fine that you want to do that, what's?
That's in order, in order to do that, now that a motion and a second has already been made on the original motion and on the amendment. For now, if you want to ultimately do that, you have to.
Vote these two down.
Vote down the original motion. Regardless of how the amendment goes, you have to vote down the original motion and then make that proposition. So for now, that wouldn't be an amendment to the current, uh, item on the floor.
I would withdraw my motion if we can withdraw and move back to one, two, and three like we used to.
Because the motion has already been seconded, it has to be voted on. The, the motion is no longer yours to rescind, it's now the board's.
Right. So we have Doug's, is there any more discussion about Doug's amendment to the original motion? Seeing none? Oh.
Maybe just for clarification, so if we vote the two down, we'll go back and vote one in. Just so everybody.
Well, you can try it, if you can see, you can make that motion, yeah, you can try it. Alright, so the amendment is for Jay, John, and Amy. Uh, seeing no further discussions.
And that?
Do we need a roll call vote?
No, the vote is simply to make that change to the motion, it isn't adopting that as the vote, as the chairs.
We gotta, we gotta vote on that again.
That's simply.
This is the amendment.
The motion, right.
Okay. Okay. So is there any other discussion or any clarifications from Corporation Council that anyone would like? Seeing none? All in favor of Doug's amendment, uh, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Not to accept amendment, say the same sign, aye?
Aye.
More amendment, um, fail. Back to Brad's original motion, is there a discussion about that? Seeing none? All in favor of the original motion? Vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Against the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Carry. So, this is where we'll take a pause. Jay Lou, county board chair, John vice, and Russ second vice.
I am stepping down now.
Been a pleasure to work with the board. I'll stay in touch with all you guys. And thanks to staff and everybody, it's been a joy, so.
I want to thank, uh, before we split up, I want to thank working with the board, staff. They have the light district.
Thanks, John.
Morning, you've got a call.
Thanks, bro.
So they want us to leave, I bet you. Is that, are you gonna leave or we gonna?
It's just a recess, uh, I just needed to talk to Jay really briefly, if, and then Jay will call us back, if you want to take five minutes, that's fine, otherwise the chair at the time did not set a specific time, so. If you want to just hang out, it should just be a minute, it's up to you.
Yeah.
With the, with the new, uh, spokesman. Hopefully we don't get along. I, I don't call you by name, it's your fault. But I'll apologize ahead of time, because I'm sure I will. Alright, uh, organizational matters, we've already accomplished that. We go into the committee as a whole. So we'll, the, need a motion on the committee?
I shall move.
Second.
Move the second, did you get it?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Alright, we're, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose anyone the same time? We're in committee as a whole. Now we're gonna discuss, for the purpose of discussing the rules of order and any potential changes that, uh, that may be appropriate. Are these the only ones?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you'd like, I've sent these to you, you have these thick packet of information in front of you, which are the rules of order, which have been compiled really over years and edited each every two years. And then at the end of this last board, we collected input from all the committees of proposed changes based on their experience with these rules, and then took it to the executive committee and asked them to comment, to agree, to disagree with any of the, uh, proposed changes that bubbled their way up. So, you can, you know, rather than having to go line by line on this, here are the only proposed changes on this sheet here. You can go through and, and look at each one. If you've had a chance to study them, if anybody disagrees with any of them, we can discuss it, if you want to prove it as a whole, you can, if you want to throw it out as a whole, you can. So, this is really made a hole for you guys to discuss what you'd like to do.
Yeah, I don't have one either, for some reason.
One of these? The red?
Yeah.
This is the last page in the best packet.
Yeah, so it's a combined with gifts, I was wearing glasses.
If you find your ordinance 1320 packet, it's the very last page.
I got it here.
Otherwise, that's it, yeah. I, I've got.
You got that?
There you go, yeah.
It's not red.
It's not red.
Not red.
Alright. So we'll go through the rules of orders or proposed changes by the committee. I think what we have to do is, uh, and does anybody want to present these, or should we just read them? And act on them one at a time? Would that be appropriate?
I think we should go, if I can.
Department by department.
I think just go right down the page.
Right.
Because I'd like to look at that first one right away.
Now, let's take a look at general government, anybody want to, uh, make them?
So I'm gonna look at A. That's actually a policy issue.
Which one?
A.
A.
Except for tax deeds, okay, so, tax deeds goes to the planning committee and stuff, they go to the, uh, environmental services. Anytime we sell land or look at land, it's in the policy, it is the administrator that brings that forward. Then it goes to the planning committee, which goes to environment, then it goes to general government. I think we had one time that we had a piece of land, and that was about the only reason this came up. So basically, it, it wouldn't have to be in our rules of order. It just has to be a policy issue to follow the what policy we already have.
Added instruction for, for this committee.
Because we did the 800 parcels, got caught up on that, so we're doing that every other year. But usually, anything that comes from sale in our policy is the administrator. He's supposed to bring that to us and, and why and all that. Okay? To the full board and stuff.
Alright, let's act on that individually then first.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In committee of the whole, we can't add on.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, but, so, we can at least make a suggestion that we.
Just go back to policy with that, not even have that.
Take it out completely?
I think take it out, just go back to policy. It doesn't have to be in our rules of order unless you want to change that policy.
That's something that we brought up in executive.
But what ultimately is, is probably the most efficient way to do this would be for everyone, if, if, if you can come to a consensus on each of the items. Come to a consensus more or less, you can't call a motion and you can't do anything, you've come to a consensus on whether it will or will not be included, and then when we come out, um, it is on the agenda for the board to act. And the board can essentially just adopt what was, uh, made as a consensus decision. Or the potential change, and if someone wants to, again, things could get very messy if we want to then have people make amendments and things like that. It'd be easier if there was a consensus on each item, and if there was anything that we got hung up on, it'd get removed for now and potentially sent to a committee to figure out later.
Okay, then, so we should, uh, just by voice vote? Uh, or whether the consensus is that we should remain this one in and kind of prove it along as we come out of session.
Again, I would steer away from having any kind of vote, but if, if no one is saying anything against it.
Alright, does anybody have any negatives to that?
I don't know if it's negative, I just have a question, because I thought Jen Gov dealt with property disposal or purchasing.
No, it goes to environmental, the tax.
Dow is automatically.
Jen, it does go because it, it goes to second.
It goes to Jen Gov after.
Yeah.
It goes afterwards because it's, because it's, uh, financial.
Alright.
It does go through.
Okay.
There was also a consideration or a proposal by executive committee to bring recycling to public protection. So that's something that could be considered in our, in our general consensus.
With our restructure and responsibilities, it, it makes sense for Mo, since he's dealing with the recycling center, that it be in public safety, public court.
Does anybody have any comments that adversely to that proposal?
Just, where was it now? It was just hanging out there.
Um, no, it was in, uh, it was, it was not in the rules of order anywhere.
That's okay, that's what I thought.
Was it in environmental?
No.
No.
It was an independent, so it was nowhere.
That's right, it used to be with.
Yeah, it used to.
Okay. Environmental Services. Uh, will, Parks and Services, or Parks and Trails should report through the public service and, uh, law enforcement, you know, committee. Does, uh, anybody have any objection or adversities toward, uh, moving that to the, uh, the Public Works Committee for Oversight?
So what portion are we sending there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Parks and Trails, good point, but I think, uh, there is a committee on Parks and Trails, but I think that, uh, what we were trying to include in that was the fact that, uh, public protection has done a lot of work with ATVs and UTP trail, and there's been quite a development on that, that didn't seem to fit with the silent trail and the shower and those other.
That's a committee you're on, Doug?
Doug is on that committee, Doug is organized.
If, if you recall, we created a new Parks and Trails department, and, and that's under Mo's division because a lot of this is the construction and the maintenance and the, and the parks and so on. So rather than have Mo come to Environmental Services and report exclusively to that committee, we've, we've moved the department over there, so it makes sense move the reporting up through that part. What's not going to change is the planning effort, and the plans and the, and the analysis will still be done by our environmental services people, Bob Shop. And that's why on the committee agendas, you always have a Parks and Trails update. So there, so you really have the Parks and Trails series.
Okay. They'll be carrying out the work realistically, Mo won't come to Environmental Services and say we're working on this trail.
Well, he might give a report on that, but, but the, the policy has already been set, and so now, uh,
The planning still stays. The planning still stays.
Yeah, the planning will stay in Environmental Services.
Highway does all the signage and everything, don't they?
Yes.
Okay. I don't anticipate any objections to that. The next one. Lemonade the line for you, well, that's not much of a discussion item. Clarify language and responsibilities of, uh, agricultural representative. Should the position vote on this one, I, I don't have, uh, this came as a suggestion. Does anybody have any comment, positive or negative in that particular? Maybe.
Is that a question, what do they do now, do they vote on non-agricultures?
We, we voted as a committee unanimously to let him vote on everything, because the vast majority of what we do vote on, you could tie to agriculture at some point.
We didn't want him to spend our time.
Right.
State that he only would, uh, for any.
Yeah.
So we would have to take that out.
Just, just to clarify the fact.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Um, does anybody know where that is in the rules of order?
Under Environmental Services.
Yeah, I read it. I know it.
Thank you, Chair, can I have a second?
Last page.
Have a comment, John?
For, for you new people, we used to have like 15 committees. And five, six years ago, we went to a central government where we went to environmental, uh, highway, human services, and general government. So even now, and each one of those, the chairman of each one of those takes up the executive committee with the county chair. Just a little comment for some new people.
But this really is mounting to us, we're trying to clear up the confusion that was caused by that process that we did. There's little, little things that are happening, so this is just a clarification thing, I don't want anticipate any particular objections.
It doesn't say anything in the environmental services.
Actually, the rules of order do indicate that, that they should only vote on, on items.
Somewhere, right, no, I agree.
I read it.
I read it.
And then, it also states that, uh, he would be, make up a quorum, so that's why we decided he should probably be able to vote.
Right, right.
You know, he makes up the quorum, so he probably should be able to vote.
Oh, sorry, yes.
And most of it is related to his position.
Six, fifty-six. Line thirty, thirty-one.
Oh, yeah, thirty, thirty-one. What did you?
Article A, section one, subsection B.
This just clarifies that. Could be more.
Fifty-page six.
Rebecca, page six?
Eleven.
Yeah, because he's considered a member present.
Yeah.
That's her quorum.
Yeah, the committee voted to remove that portion.
You got that one? Okay, anybody keeping track of what we're doing?
So the executive committee, I think what consensus is that he can vote on all matters.
Yeah, this is.
With the red here, just remember when we go to this, the red here says, the executive committee said he should only vote on.
That is correct.
So we're just saying that's gonna fail when we come out and vote, carry.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Now, UW extension to report through general government committee except regarding agricultural issues. Recommend, recommend moving oversight of general government committee except for aggravated program. You comment on that?
Doesn't most of what UW extension do have something to do with ag? No?
Most of it doesn't.
It really doesn't.
Okay. It used to, Chair.
Yeah, that, all that.
Okay.
It's all. And there's a new ag agent that's at point two-five or something.
Yeah.
So that should be not an objectable item. Outside agencies, the Westcap and West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Committee should report to general government committee.
Where are they now?
Environmental Services.
Alright.
Yeah, I think so.
I think you're right.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Any objections to that suggestion? That you might want to expound upon?
Yeah.
Health and Human Services Committee Supervisor Middleton requests you to have public comments available on new website. This was not recommended by the executive committee. Amy, do you want to comment?
Yeah, can I give a little background on this? So this was a request that I got from one of my constituents to try and understand. So when we get, um, we get public comments, and then we also get emails that come in, like this one that we got just the other day, came in an email, those are not anywhere for anyone to access. So, I'm not talking about all the public comments that might come in between, you know, Joe Schmo might say, hey, I don't like my highway, um, hot hole. Not that kind of stuff, but it's the public comments that come through the clerk's office and then get distributed to all of us. So there, there are body of information that, uh, is kind of like doing a public comment in person. And alls it would be is somehow cataloged on our new fancy website that citizens can go in and access it easily. What happens now is they do information requests, and then our staff have to go pick through what they're looking for. So it would take some burden off the clerk's office and allow more transparency and quick access for people to just see what kind of comments we get. It's not all the individual comments, it's the comments through the office when they say, send this up to the supervisor. And we get, you know, whatever, two on a non-controversial-ish, um, agenda.
We might get 200 in a week.
And we get more on some of the other ones.
We get clicks.
So. And then that would be easy for the, a public person to be able to, um, seek, search out a date or a topic. And so, obviously, we'd let our staff hear how to build it into the, um, new website, but that's what that's about.
This can kind of tie into the next, not to jump ahead, but when we get to executive committee one and one A, this can kind of tie into that as well.
Oh, right, yep.
And just, I just think, ba- ba- backing up there, it, it becomes like a contest to see who can send the most public comments in. When, when we get to controversial issues, when it's stower, when it's, whatever it happens to be that's controversial, it becomes, oh, look at, this site sent in 3,000, and this site only sent in 600. And I think that's, that's what it becomes, it becomes a contest to see which side of a controversial issue can send in the most public comments.
And a lot of them are just repeat, because they, they'll send in the same form letter.
Yeah, so it's a form letter that's sent in by 50 people.
Yeah.
So looking at some other county board, like best practices, trying to prepare for this, there's some, I don't know what we would want to do, or what would be good to do, but there's some boards that put a limit on the number of public comments that are received in a certain way, so if some are received electronically through a form or anything like that, they put the time in which they can. they put the time in which they can be submitted, and then they will also limit the number that are accepted for consideration. So something like that where it's a repeated form letter that's sent out from the same two hundred people can be kind of filtered through and looked at as more or less one submission of that same idea. The point being, though, just that, given that opportunity to submit those messages, I would assume is better than not receiving them at all.
But we would still get them, and then how much staff time are we going to spend filtering through those same, you know, those same fifty? Because staff is still going to have to go through those fifty and pitch forty-nine of them out and say, "Well, we're going to put this one in." And that's going to burn up an awful lot of staff time.
I wasn't thinking we'd make staff filter through them, I guess. I don't know that this really gets at the competition that people have on a different issue. Who can send in the most? That still is going to happen. You know, I mean, that still get bombarded, whether it gets cataloged in a usable form or not, we still, you know. I don't know that that's going to stop.
Well, I'd like to ask our court counsel, really getting back to our role as the supervisor. I remember when we had so many people with, we moved the meeting up to Unity High School, and some of the people that had comments, they said, "Well, you had so many for this and so many against that." And that was completely out of function as a rule of a supervisor. They were trying to present information on form letters and different things like that. And our role as the supervisor is to list the public comments that come in through at the meeting or something that we know is really legit.
So I think potentially what you're asking is the amount of time that you spend on public comment, either at a board meeting or at any of your committees or anything like that, it's entirely up to you. Those are rules that you set. If you want to set no limit on the amount of time that a person can make a public comment, you can do that. If you want to eliminate public comments at board meetings, we have people need to do that. Meeting needs to be available for people to come and listen. Meeting doesn't have to be available for people to come and voice their opinions. That is your decision as the board to do that. And so when we moved it to Unity, for example, that was because we need to have it accessible to people for them to come in and watch and listen. Now, fortunately, we have a web system that allows basically anyone from anywhere to do it, which is great. So that helps. But in terms of actual comments themselves, you're not going to run into any kind of issue by limiting or expanding their ability to communicate with people.
Our role as a supervisor is provide good cover. There's several, I've been to a lot of different county boards, the Great County, everyone. They don't always allow public comments that don't have to. And I want to make sure that we do it.
Oh, we're going to have public comment. However, we're going to restrict it.
But you have to have.
Lisa, you're handling a lot of this stuff coming in. Does this sound like it's overwhelming or potentially overwhelming?
When we had discussion about it from our angle in the executive committee, we addressed it with Malia, just a couple of things. Right now, the current process to do an open records request is not that difficult or challenging. That's been a responsibility of our office for a long time. It does take up some time, but that is part of our statutory duties. So to do the open records request, anytime somebody has, you know, questions about, I'd like to request open records regarding a certain topic or pertaining to a certain meeting, we can access them and give them the information they're looking for like that. If they want, you know, all meetings, public comment from all meetings within certain states, we can kind of help them filter through that, which is a little bit easier for the public, for us to do a little bit of help in taking as far as that goes. That being said, I guess it was our concern, like what is the intent of public comment? Traditionally, it's been done as a way for the public to communicate with their board supervisors, to urge them to consider perspectives, not necessarily as a forum to display all public opinion. That would be, there are other forums in order to do that. That was a concern, I think, of Malia's. Maybe Joe can elaborate on that a little bit. I'm not sure if she talked to you about that. But that being said, our concern was more about the intent of what is public comments? Public comments that we want, you know, everybody to access, and, you know, it may be used as a, or tried to be used as a tool to vote on, you know, how many people are for or against, which really is not, you know, a basis for doing anything, or is it appropriate? I guess is the question we had.
Right. So I think what we're going to do is just move this to the open meeting and resolve it by vote.
Executive committee. But shouldn't we try to figure out what we're going to vote on? I mean, do we want it for thirty minutes and stuff again? I mean, I think we should have the thirty-minute public comment chat at these meetings because now they're recorded.
That would still be the, this isn't removing that.
But I mean, when we have a huge issue like that, that's when we'd have a separate public hearing or something, but we're talking about going to Unity.
That's what we do.
So I mean, that's, so the public comment could be there. If something is that big, we would have a special meeting.
What you're suggesting is leave the existing rules in place that we've got now that are actually working and not make any change to.
And leave it alone, yeah.
These are, that is going to still be.
Yep.
So we're going to move this on to the next proper protocol. So that we can act on it effectively and get it over with by vote. Executive committee, the public comment process should be consistent through all committees. I don't know that it's not all the recommended and consistent with the public comment should be required in person in the government center or at the location of the meeting. Anybody have any comment on that?
I do, just because that's what I had mentioned before. So I agree that the process should be consistent through all committees, with the difference being the requirement to be in person at the government center to provide public comments. I don't think we should limit it to just that. We should have different options online to be able to submit those.
Okay.
They can still currently email those public comments. I think what they're talking about, Brian, is allowing people on the phone without taking the time to come in. I don't know if that is productive for us. So I think they can get their public comments through all the supervisors in the form of an email, which is not really addressing that here, but to let them, if they do want to speak, that they do speak at the location, do so.
Okay.
That's what it's always been.
Yep. But he's looking for clarification.
Yeah. Yep. So then, just to, well, for further clarification, then, so like the situation that my wife and I were talking about, like coming up with situations for this was, so let's say you have, and let me know if that covers it then, that you can still email in or something like that. So say you've got a single parent who on a Tuesday at six o'clock is feeding a kid and getting him to bed and stuff like that. They can still get their public comment made through email or something like that and not have to be here in person?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect. You're going to find that they'll get the word to you when they want to.
But they do have that option.
There's a timeframe set with public comments for them to be able to get them before a meeting. Isn't there, Lisa? Don't they have their email twenty-four hours before the meeting or something?
We always forward along the emails no matter what time we get them. That being said, it's not easy for you guys to get. We just don't guarantee that you have time to read them if they come in less than twenty-four hours, but we still send them along, so you guys are for sure get them.
I just wanted to make sure that, because the way it reads, it says all public comments should be required to be in person. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't strictly the case.
Test to speak under the question.
You'll get your comments.
Oh, he's got a point.
People with disabilities in February in Wisconsin, are you kidding me? Are they going to get in their vans and drive?
They have a supervisor committee and their own district, they know who to contact. And very simple, that's.
Clarification.
Yeah.
So they'll contact you and whether they're disabled in one way or another.
Mr. Chair, I'd be in part of those opportunities for this to the people. I know everybody in my district around the country knows, all listen to them twenty-four seven. That's just my point of being a supervisor representing the people, not just people in my district. I think everybody knows they have the supervisor twenty-four seven. They can get a hold of Johnny P.
Oh, they always, I know. We all have the same experience, I'm sure.
So I have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, aren't we talking about, not just all public comment, but are we also talking about allowing people on Zoom to comment in?
Well, that's a, that is, that's the decision that can be made by our Rules of Order, I believe, by the chairman, whether he wants to allow.
So you can do, okay, because I thought we were talking about virtual, I mean.
Just for your information to kind of clear this up, I would consider without hesitation to allow Zoom presentations due to similar reasons or God knows how many reasons, but I think that's also going to, should be applicable. So if I have the decision to make, I would definitely.
But then you can also shut them down if they get, because we've had people come on when we had Zoom things, and that's when you get the ones who, they don't care what they say or how they say it, and it gets verbally abusive and stuff. So it has to, we have to have the ability to be able to shut that stuff down too.
Right.
That's when we enacted the limit.
Equally as much as we do with someone in person that stands up there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's enough information on that. We'll consider that at a time we have. Yeah, remove this conflict of interest from the agenda as an item. So I think that's self-explanatory. Somebody, if they have a conflict.
It's our responsibility.
Well, first of all, it's your own personal responsibility, and secondly, I assume that people that recognize a conflict, well, there will be, there will be interest. You don't have to, I don't know, you're not swearing. You're not going to do it anyway. So I think it's a moot point to sit on there with that comment. So that one, we'll just bring up. Cancel February meetings unless really needed. That's something that we've done over the years, and it's worked pretty good. Kim, do you have a point?
I got a comment. I don't know why you got to cancel one, but I think that should be any meeting if there is enough business to do. Why just February? It should be any meeting, any committee, if there's enough to do, we shouldn't just have one.
We can change that at a time when we get a good one.
And I don't think we should just randomly cancel the February meeting because what does that do for people if they have something coming up? Then they have to wait two months. That's not right.
Well, if there's something coming up, we would all cancel it.
But this is saying cancel the February meeting.
That's why I said cut it off. Unless there's something that should be considered.
And I think that should be everyone. We've got somewhere you just meet your five minutes. We should have.
Agreed.
And that has not happened in the twenty years.
So you're saying instead of just a word says February, you're inserting any.
But any meeting too, not just the whole board meeting, any committee meeting, any that we should have.
We do that consistently now.
By the way, well, no, I don't think there's anything presented. We cancel the meeting.
But this is something that I don't know. Do you have a comment, Ryan?
Let's take February out. We're just, yeah.
Well, I think just take. Leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I think just forget about it, leave it out completely, and if we don't need a meeting, it doesn't matter what month it is.
We can cancel a meeting anytime we want anyway. We don't have to make a special rule.
It's automatic.
Confuse cancellations when a meeting is not. We can pretty well conclude that we've been canceling February meetings in the past because generally there's nothing to be considered. However, the last couple of years, I think we've had a February meeting because there was something that had to be addressed. And if there is, that would clarify the problem that we've got. So we can cancel any meeting anytime we want, and I don't think we have to confuse it by specifically designating a particular month. Court of Counsel question. Can term limits be set? That was the answer in my explanation. Is that part of the general issues raised? Well, does anybody want to comment on the general issues raised? Court of Counsel is here and willing and ready to comment or answer your questions if you have one.
How is this breaking?
Statutory, I think it has to be said in the federal legislature.
Of the state.
Of the state, there wouldn't be else there.
Answered that question.
That's great.
Can supervisor legally vote online? I think that's up to the chairman of the now new chair of the board. I think that's, he has the ability to accept that boarding through the electronic services that we have available. I believe that's true already. That you don't have to vote on. Oh, they want, they want to make up the, oh, to change the executive committee, make up them as the committee to be made up as the chairman of each four boards plus the county chairman. That would make five supervisors on the committee, on the executive committee.
And so, Chair.
Brown, you have a point.
I think what that means is that this is the policy that's been in place, but according to the Rules of Order, it would never actually find it, right?
Wasn't put in there.
The way the Rules of Order are drafted is different than what you actually have been doing. So this would be formalizing in the Rules of Order what has been the practice.
It'd be consistent with our real Rules of Order without any, all right, all right. So that one is pretty much a no-brainer to the Rules of Order. Next, executive committee recommending the Rules of Order establish that the compensation, well, that one we passed already by time respect.
Yeah, we got a little late, so this is just a way to put in there that a given month, we will do that because you have to do it prior to the board being elected. So that when you get elected, you know what you're going to be getting paid. So instead of waiting until February, March, we'll probably do this win chatted November.
Well, the recommendation was that we align it with the budget adoption, however.
Okay, that would be something that would eliminate the potential of what we did last time. Missed the opportunity to raise the rest.
Doesn't the compensation have to be set prior to anyone taking out papers for candidacy? So we need to get it, the date we pick is critical, the month we pick, it has to be prior. Even if we would have done it when we did, we were late. I mean, people had already taken out papers for candidacy.
Yeah.
That's also a statute, isn't it, Chris?
It's not, it's not a statute for the county board. It's a statute for the office of sheriff, registered deeds, treasurer, clerk. For some reason, chapter fifty-nine doesn't address the county board, and they're all over the place how it's being done.
But we need to, we need to have it done prior to anyone taking out papers. They need to know what's on.
Oh, we can act on that one, then. That's.
I mean, shouldn't we just have it, we make the decision, excuse me, in October? I mean, that's six weeks before anybody's going to take out papers. Or if we wait till November, we're realistically two weeks ahead of it, you know, when somebody's taking out, you know, when it's time to take out papers.
Well, now that would align with the board because that's when we do the fully proposed budget is October.
We should be okay then with October? Is that what you still want?
Because it says they recommend it, so it gets recommended in October. We got to get it. We gotta get it passed by November. I think it's gonna slow down. This just says they recommend it.
He'll give us that.
It's cutting it pretty close.
Yeah.
Why can't we do it still?
I don't know why we can't do it in May, you know, and it is, don't make it.
Because all, just do it plenty early so it comes to county board and it's done.
So the recommendation has gone through and then it, because it has to go to a do we have general government committee to be approved too? Let's go back, do it and so go see a couple.
I would do it, probably August would be the, the correct month.
All right. There we go, this is, all right. Now we'll get back into, I got a couple for you, Jay.
Oh, go ahead, Brad.
So, well, I don't, I don't know if this is the time for it or not, but I'll throw it out there anyway. I think the chair of the county board should be on general government. Just because it's the financial end of things. And I think that's a good spot for the chair to be, to know those answers. And then.
I think it always was that way, but we just never defined it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's been that way the last six years, I know. Dean was on and then, and then Chris was on.
I can employ myself.
I'll be there.
Resignation coming already, Jay?
Yeah. I'll be there. Whatever.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm finally, I'm finally on now.
Okay, so then. One, one more, Jay.
Go ahead.
On, on page five of our Rules of Order, on article 72, which is the chairperson shall appoint each supervisor to two standing committees best as practical. That's way back from when we had 21 supervisors and tons and tons of boards. So Malia wrote this out for me. So I would recommend we change it to the chairperson shall appoint each board member to standing committees using a process that incorporates fairness and tenure preference. The process shall be agreed to by the majority of the board members prior to the appointments.
Okay, that would be second, we can take it open.
Yep.
Okay, Chairman, we'll keep that in mind so we're making the motion. Go ahead. Move to regular session. Wait, oh. Just a minute, Kim, you go ahead. Any more discussion?
Page two, line 44 on the, we have everything going after introduction to the county board.
Yeah.
Should that be before introduction, not after? If we, some of these.
Seeding?
Am I reading it wrong? It's, it's in ordinance and resolution.
Resolution.
Article three, see where I marked it here?
Yeah.
And it says, the appropriate committee's agenda for consideration after introduction to the county board. Should be before, shouldn't it?
Where are you?
I'm on page two at the last line. Right on the bottom.
The seating of the.
Yeah, that ain't what's mine line, the second page two.
The other page two.
Yeah, there's another page two.
There's a, how many? We got about 10 drafts.
It's under article three.
Article. So it's article three.
Right here.
Ordinance and res- resolution. I mean, I just, I read that a couple of times and I think that, that should probably get changed.
And what, and what are you referring to?
To A. To an ordinance or res- yeah, that we seek to get it. But it says drafting corporate shall place a resolution on the appropriate committee's agenda for consideration after introduction at the county. Should be before.
That's one of the four ways. And I think.
It's after, it's introduced, you do all this and then it's introduced after?
I think this is, and, and I may be wrong, but I think this is for the option of if you had a, a resolution to intro- wanted passed, you would go to the chair, say, I'd like to do this. And the chair could then bring it to the board and say, I've got this, I'm going to send it now to a committee. Is that what it's saying?
Not very well.
I'm just, I'm just glad there's four options.
Well, yeah, that's the way I read it is that it gets introduced at the board and then it's the chairman that says, okay, it goes to this committee for consideration. That's, that's how I read it. And that's kind of the, I mean, at the state level, that's kind of how they do things.
So it's a two reading thing again, and we, we back everything up is what, what I see. All right. But it's on both of these options.
I believe this goes back to like 2018 when I first got here.
Yes.
They did this and then there's the nuclear option, which is number four, where you can introduce straight to the committee of the whole, but it requires.
Yeah.
I think that's the difference.
Yeah. Without going to a committee.
Right.
But these, it just seems, okay, you bring it, bring it to the, the committee after introduction.
Right.
There isn't an option to go before goes to a committee. I mean, both A and B are that way. You know, at the appropriate committee's agenda after it's introduced.
Yeah, because it makes it go through here before it can come to environmental services.
Yeah.
And it.
And it doesn't do that.
And, no, and it, and it shouldn't have to for both cases.
For both cases, what should be before it's introduced. All right.
Well, you can make that change in time.
Well, I don't know, I just, it's a legal right.
This is kind of a question for Joe.
No.
Joe.
Got a question.
Have a question. So is there a reason we need to have four options to bring a resolution or an ordinance to the floor as a supervisor?
So if I remember correctly, I wasn't at the last rules meeting, but I think that the extra mechanisms were put in there because I think there was a concern that there was not enough different ways for supervisors to get things in front of the board or in front of a committee. And so extra things were added. Again, I wasn't there, that's just my recollection.
That's correct.
Lee was there and she's on Zoom, so she can.
Can she answer that? I mean, I guess to me, there's just, can we just not have a one stop shop? And just, I mean, either it be administrator or the chair, then they send it to Malia, then to committee, then to the county board. I mean.
The concern, the concern again was that, let's say, for example, Jay doesn't like the legislation.
Right.
If, if you make it a once, if you make Jay the one stop chairman, chairman Luke. A one stop shop and he says, no, your thing doesn't get on the agenda, then your legislation never gets on the agenda. That, that's the reason is it gives you different options to get things in front of it. So if you only have one option and it has to go through the chairperson, then he can stymie any legislation you want to pass. He can basically just stonewall you for two years or until you get that rule changed.
A lot of counties do it now.
Right. And now that hasn't been what this board has done. But in theory, that could happen at some point in the future. So that's why there's different.
You want to change your vote?
I can vote on anything.
No, for the chair, you want to change your vote.
Okay. Well, I think we've covered mostly everything that we're going to have to address. My motion good? Your motion stands as going back into a regular work session, is that correct? Need a second. I have a second. Over. All in favor, signify by aye. Same sign, aye. Okay, we're back in, in session, in our. We can be, so we're going to continue on the organizational matters. Twenty twenty-four and the belt and up. Developed and adopted revisions of the full county board of supervisory ordinances. How do we go about this? Do we want to? Do we want to, does anybody have track on which ones or do we have to go through them individually and vote on?
I think I can tell you, and, and I'll need some people to back me up on this. But I was trying to keep a record of the ones that were challenged a little bit to what was written here. Under environmental services, three A acquisitions should not vote on agriculture.
That would be.
Non-agriculture right back.
Then you're saying that we should do them all at once or do you want to go through them one at a time?
I'm gonna have to go from one at a time.
So.
Yep.
I think myself and probably Lisa have been keeping track of what has been a consensus and what has been getting struck. You could theoretically have someone move that all of the, we come on, I, I was talking. Did we come out of the committee of the whole yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we are.
So someone could move that all of the issues that were discussed and were basically agreed to by everyone, be adopted. And what I potentially would suggest, because I don't think anyone here has specific language that they want added to the rules of order. These are all more or less concepts that you want to get adopted into the rules of order at some point. My recommendation for a motion would be move to adopt all of the consent items from what was discussed in the committee of the whole and direct the administrator and corporation council to draft the language for presentation at the next board for adoption. And then vote on that. And then if and when that passes, then move to the particular items that were struck from the consent and address each of those one at a time. So that, again, it gets less messy. Otherwise, you can address each thing one at a time as well, but that's more or less what I did in the committee of the whole. So the, you could, you could ask Lisa which things got struck based on her understanding. And if anyone disagrees, I think, so, so you'd have, you'd have to have a motion first, a second, and then in discussion, Lisa could present that to you.
One other issue, that's, I understand that. Does everybody understand what the, the government just tried to describe? Okay, we have one other issue that we're going to have to, to address is the additions that, that Brad had brought up. That would be separate then. Okay, go ahead, waiting for one.
I can make the motion, joke of the. So to accept all the, the consensus items and move forward with the other ones. I know you said more than that.
Okay. Lisa, do you understand what that motion is?
Yeah, I can go through the list and I'll just tell you which ones are consent.
I'll second it, Jay.
We got a second.
I'm waiting for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, second. Now, Lisa, do you have a list of the ones that?
I think so.
The general consensus is. Everybody listen very closely because if you have any objections to her understanding of the, the general consensus, you better speak up, otherwise we, there will be an act.
So I'm going off that last page, the first, the first topic under general government and environmental services, all the, all of those, the first two, those five, I have all those listed as consensus. Then under the health and human services and executive committee. I'm sorry, it's supposed to only be.
One A wasn't consensus, that was supposed, that's a policy issue.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And then three under environmental services.
It's a consensus to make the change.
Okay, change that one.
That was, that was, that wasn't consensus that we adopted, it was consensus that it's.
Changed.
That's struck.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody understand that, you got that, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Any other ones? Go ahead.
All right. So then the next ones I have, that there was consensus on under executive committee, just following the public comment part. Remove the agenda item, questions with number two. And I think the rest of the way through, the proposed changes or ways to stay them same or methods to stay the, stay the same were all consensus. So if I had it correctly, the only.
We took February out.
We took February out.
Took February out, but that was, I thought, by consensus. And then like number four, moving that during August was also done by consensus, so.
Okay. Is that all of them?
Yeah. It's of my understanding that the only items up for pre-discussion, I think, are the public comment items, I believe.
Oh, okay, so.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm.
Go ahead now.
Go ahead.
So the consensus items would be general government, two A. Environmental services, one A, two A, four A, and five A. Executive committee, two A. And three A with the amendment to strike February and have it just be at any, any meeting. And all of the general government things are staying.
Okay, now, the process would be to.
So Doug has already made a motion to adopt those things.
Right.
Brad has already seconded it. So now there'd be additional discussion on, on if there is any or a vote. All right.
You have to comment or additional discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brad.
So my, my idea of putting the chair in general government and my amendment to the rules of order, do you want them now or after we vote on this?
Those will be after. Items after.
Okay, yeah, no, I thought so, I was just making sure.
That's what I'm trying to clarify with my. Go ahead. That's it then, we need to vote on it? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. During none, we will act on that in November. I mean, in the next. November sounds good.
The budget's already over.
And so.
About that November. Okay, now, Brad, you have a, a motion to consider?
Want them both or just one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay, so I would make a motion to add to the rules of order that the chair is automat- the county board chair is automatically on general.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of that, signify by aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
So article seven two, to change the wording to the chairperson shall appoint each board member to standing committees using a process that incorporates fairness and tenure preference. The process shall be agreed to by the majority of the board members prior to the appointments.
Need a second on that? We do before any discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of that, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Yeah.
Also.
Kim, were you going to change yours or were you okay with?
Which one?
The, after the introduction to the county board.
The one that you talked about.
Oh, get those afters off.
Yeah. Because it really should.
You're gonna create a new regulation?
I wonder if we should look at that. And then, and then when it comes back, we might have to put before, after.
Yeah.
Okay.
But as long as it gets looked at and comes back to us.
I think when it, when it comes back, we should look at that, yeah.
You're gonna make a note on the committee then?
Well, it's gonna come back to the board, so we should, it should be that those two will. We didn't see how.
Committee gonna discuss it?
We can discuss it at the next board when that, when we do the law of rules. If that before shouldn't be, or should we have?
Why would we not do it now?
Or we can do it now.
Get it done.
The. Wait until it comes out.
Do I have a motion to ever put it in there?
You want to break a motion maybe?
I'll make a motion, okay.
I'll make a motion to put it, and take after and put before.
I'll second. Motion made in the second to make that change.
I apologize, just to be.
Anybody specific?
That would be the after on line 44 in sub two A of article three, so. Yes, two B of article three on line four of page three. And. That's terrible.
It's two A and two B.
And two B, after and before.
Yep. You gonna have any discussion on that clarification or after the clarification? Hearing none. Call the questions, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion hearing. Presentation on division and governing committee's duties, responsibilities, and as assigned functions.
Okay, just to give you a little debrief on this. As we go further into the assignment of committees, we wanted to, first of all, for the new people especially, and some of you have been around once, maybe clarification, what each division does, so that you know what you're getting into. So you may say, hey, I want to go in this committee, but when you hear what happens in another one, you go, ooh, that might be better. So I've asked each of the directors and Don and Joe, just to give a brief, very brief overview of their divisions or their areas of responsibility, so you know what you're getting. So Bob, would you like to?
Alphabetical order?
Yeah.
You see one of these at a long time.
Are you saying Bob or?
Well, this is our video in our new venue. Haven't seen one of these in a while. Chad, get the PowerPoint up. Thanks Chad. Well, good evening, everybody. Congratulations Chairman Luke. All you electedly, newly elected officials, welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you over the next two years. My name is Bob Kazmersky and I am the environmental services director. As Vince mentioned, yeah, this presentation is does two things. One, it's a quick, just quick and dirty overview of each division and their core functions as well as our staffing levels. And also provides context to your next agenda item, what is that, twelve C? Which is an exercise that myself and our county planner, Tim Anderson, will facilitate in standing committee assignments. So we keep this real brief. Basically, here's our, one of our organizational charts, pretty simple format. The ES division consists of four departments. You got the land information office, forestry, land and water, resources department, as well as registered deeds. There's an error there, actually have within our division, our team consists of twenty-two staff. But we also take on two seasonals in land and water every summer as interns. It's a relatively small division compared to my colleagues, but we're just as equally important. It's funny, if you think about these four departments, what's the common theme? What's the common theme? Anybody?
Awesome staff.
Thank you, awesome staff. One thing that comes about is land, land, right? Anything to do with land use, regulating or addressing the human impacts on land, addressing land development are some of the things, as well as recording, whether it's in our mapping or DTO. So that's a commonality and with that, cause private property is special and important to people, oftentimes we get to sometimes contentious issues as our governing committee may know.
Total environment, really.
What's that?
You're in charge of total environment usually, really.
Right, yeah, there are water bodies, you know, we have over nearly four hundred lakes and rivers and four hundred miles of rivers and streams, so you know, it's all connected, it's all relative and activity on the landscape also impacts one of our biggest assets, which is our water bodies. Next slide there, Chad. Just real quick, here's the full organizational chart. I have, within our team, we have three team leaders. Steve Geiger, he's our county surveyor. He's our leader in the land information department. In land and water, Eric Boicek, who's also our county conservationist. He's our team leader there and then Sally Spanell, she's an elected official. She's a registered deeds, great team to work with. And we also have an administrative assistant, Carol Digwitz. And it's, it's interesting, since we've done this conversion to the divisional model, she's been cost trained and really serves the whole division as our administrative assistant. So that's a product of the divisional models. All the folks in blue are just the staff within each of those respective departments. Here's our mission statements, I'm a big fan of mission statements, particularly if they're short. They're, they're action orientated and articulate success. And so really what they do is list our core function, core functions in a nutshell. And then lastly, this last slide Chad is do a quick, quick review of some of the things that we all do. Again, it's a comprehensive list of services. Through our zoning office, we administer several important land use ordinances, including our subdivision ordinance, comprehensive land use ordinance, shoreline ordinance. Zoning department also issues all land use and sanitary sewer permits. We work a lot with developers and plumbers. County surveyor maintains the public land survey system. And he also reviews and approves all subdivision flats or applications. Statutorily, our land information department also does parcel mapping. We use aerial photography or geographical information systems, GIS and LIDAR. Our GIS department also maintains map viewer, maybe some of you have used it, it's the web guide, web guided stream. It's a really, really useful tool. We hear about it all the time, it's an online interactive mapping searching tool that uses aerial imagery to do a number of different things, including displaying boundaries of properties. Variety of land use features, you can find old permits that were old attached to that property. You can look at your past valuations, taxes you paid in the past or your previous owner paid. There's a plethora of information on that and that's a big tool that we we maintain as well. Our county planner, here's again, Tim, wake up, Tim. I got you. There's, there's Tim, he, he maintains a lot of county planning documents and facilitates group planning processes. He's a really a valuable member of our team. He's a journalist that many of our other divisions can use for planning services. We do a lot of research, right now we're really engaged in two groundwater studies that were supported by the past county board as well as the state. We completed two well water studies and will conduct two more watershed studies beginning this year, both Apple River and Upper Tree watershed. We have a county engineer and we do a lot of outreach education, particularly in land and water. We work with lake associations and lake districts to work on lake management plans to mitigate any runoff issues, maintain their water quality, particularly thinking about future generations. They also apply for it and administer a lot of grants for those lake associations as well. We work to eradicate or at least mitigate or educate about removal of invasive species. We also do oversee and permit metallic mining operations and we also work with those operators and reclamation. Do a lot of outreach with local producers. We have the ability to cost share projects regarding what kinds of best management practices. One in particular is like newer storage facilities, that's a hot topic. We have the ability to cost share projects if those producers are interested in that. Mark Gosman, he's our county forester, he's a one man shop. Believe it or not, we have seventeen thousand acres of county forest. Tenure average, we harvest collectively cut roughly four hundred acres and he's responsible for that. He also is a big piece to our trail planning team and in the parks department as well. And then lastly, our registered deeds, basically statutorily, that is your house, your office that records all vital records and documents. Your deeds, your mortgages, your birth certificates, your D D two four teens, et cetera. And they're also responsible for, for preserving any historical record. Right now, they're actually working on modernizing their records on an online searchable format and capabilities, so that's coming your way. And that's my elevator speech, although might have went a little longer, but if you have any questions, my door is always open. If you'd like to learn more, feel free to contact me. We're always interested in, and to learn from others, particularly elected officials, as well as the broader community. In, in particular, any needs or concerns or any ideas you may have. You're more than welcome to come and visit. I am the environmental services.
Next, we're gonna have Chad with general government. I introduce myself to everybody that doesn't know me, but again, I'm Chad Roberts, general government director. You have a handout on your desk, which I also provided a copy of, just in brief. You've got a org chart there. Were made up of six departments, two of them elected, one being the county clerk, one the county treasurer. We've got IT, human resources administration, and the CJCC. I included the head count and the positions within department. That's where we presently sit. Not everything is full in IT, everything else is full right now. On this chart, I broke down the generally most important duties of each office and each department. They all perform a lot of small ancillary duties. And when we talk about the general government division, I could talk about all the different projects we do, but there's just a lot of them. We operate under four main divisional goals, which is leveraging technology to maximize resources and create efficiencies. Because we're a central service, the more efficient we are, more cost effective, the more efficient other departments are. Improve efficiencies and customer service to all county departments. We are central services for the most part, so most of our stakeholders are the internal stakeholders. Increase transparency in government operations. Those are the things like the budget process, the new civic clerk software we're rolling out, the open records process, our public information off the roll, those kind of transparency issues. And then manage county resources in a fiercely conservative, responsible manner. Ours is kind of the gatekeeper for the budget, for staffing, for those kind of things, and we do it things the way that makes the most sense and we stay compliant with the policy. Those kind of things. So, because I like brevity, that's our division in brief, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. That'll wait, thank you. Next is Tanya.
Are you going off the order? First name or last?
No, I'm going health and human service. I guess DC.
I'm gonna take my feet stand over here.
Yeah. Yes.
So I can run my.
Yes.
Well, congratulations, everybody, on your new elections and appointments. My name is Tanya Ithot and I am the community services division director. So one second for Vanna to help. There we are. Okay, so this is our overview. Quick and dirty, don't interrupt. So community services division is a separate division from what actually reports to the health and human services committee, so it could be a little bit confusing. So within our community services division, we have our list of directors and managers. We're a larger, one of the larger divisions in the county. But then also reporting to the health and human service committee is Golden Age Manor, the county run nursing home down in Emery. The child support agency, which is housed in this building, and the veteran service office, which is over in the government center. But specific to human services and the board of health, it used to be called the board of health, just still here referred to that, there are a couple of statutory requirements that the committee does need to follow, so it is a advisory consisting of both citizen and county board representation. We have four county board appointed members as well as four citizen members that make up a different variety of health background and serving the people who have connections or actual illness themselves that would be representative of the people that we serve, so they can be that voice for the, for the people that we serve. So then the responsibility of that board is to recommend priorities and policies. They work closely with myself and our director team to be able to do that, advise on purchasing and providing services, if there's unmet needs, we want to hear about them. They do advise us on, if they get calls on unmet needs, so we can address those. Develop our operating procedures, they comply, help us to comply with our state requirements. And then working cooperatively with our community partners. With regard to the board of health, it's the administration and supervision piece that is concerning of this board of directors. We are a level three health department based on the number of programs that we offer as well as the credential of the health officer. So the local health officials, this whoever becomes appointed to our committee and stays on our committee, develops policy and provides leadership to us from the health side of the business. Lots of statutes, we're very statute driven, we provide a lot of mandated services in community services. So this, here's our organizational chart that is just community services division. Within the division that I oversee, we have one hundred FTE employees with an annual operating budget of about thirteen million dollars. Short and sweet, what we do in each of the reporting bodies that reports to the committee within community services, we focus on prevention, recovery, but we also have enforcement services like child welfare in public health, licensing and those types of things. So we, we are that three-pronged approach to providing services. We provide both mandated and voluntary services. We also belong to a couple of consortiums, Great Rivers Income Maintenance, which is a ten county, and the Western Wisconsin Wellness and Recovery Consortium based out of Chippewa Falls. We also, on the prevention end, drug-free communities brands we just received and we have a multi-jurisdictional tobacco coalition. We, we often bring reports from those entities to the committee to keep you informed. Golden Age Manor, you'll hear it referred to as GAM a lot. Dana Reese is the administrator of the nursing home. This is a county run nursing home opened back in nineteen fifty-nine and I believe there are a hundred and nine beds filled nursing facility, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad? You may have dropped a few beds based on staff.
Something like, I think we dropped twenty-five.
Okay, so then a veteran service officer is Andrew Buckslar. They provide the services to veterans, mostly access to federal, state, and local benefits. Transportation services, they provide plagues and plague holders to veterans. And we do invite the GAM veteran service and child support, I think about every other month to come to the committee and, and give their updates. Child support, newer director, Nicole Ewing Vitalis. They process child support benefits and establish paternity and child support orders, collect arrears, that type of thing. If Malia's on, she can add, or Joe, I don't know if there's anything to add to that, but that, those are like the, the base things that we. If Malia's on, she can add, or Joe, I don't know if there's anything to add to that, but that those are like the the base things that we. And. Wait a second.
Coroner is under that.
The medical examiner does sit in our division as well. That's it, yes, thank you. I think I might have been shorter than Chad.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Mo.
Oh.
Safety Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mo Norby. I am the proud director of Public Works Division. I'm also the Highway Commissioner. This is our org chart. We are kind of like action wheels on the ground with projects and getting things done. I have five main managers underneath our tree that do things.
On the right side.
There we go. The departments under Public Works are highways, facilities, fleet program, recycling, solid waste, parks, trails, and dams. We have fifty-five and a quarter full-time employees, and we try for eight seasons. Currently, we have three open positions in highway we're trying to fill now. Not a great market for doing this. They're all just as important as the other ones, from our janitors to our operators, to the people taking our parts. Some of our core features that we do on highway, we administer the state and county construction programs for county municipalities. We maintain a thousand sixty-two mile, lane miles of state and county highways, plus one township that contracts our services, responsible for fifty-nine county bridges and local bridges, they're currently inspected now. We also do work for our towns and our municipalities, planning, maintenance, construction, and we do run a driver's education program at the high schools for the new people getting their licenses. For facilities and the fleet, through a combination of full-time employees and contracts, we maintain the highway campus, the government center, the Justice Center, the Recycling Center, the museum, and the fairgrounds with the help of the Fair Society. We maintain the communication towers in our fleet car program, varies anywhere from fourteen to eighteen cars per staff and utilized on different things. Solid waste and recycling. Again, the Recycling Center and Highway Eight, on average, we do about twenty-two hundred tons of recycling is collected in Polk County. In twenty-twenty-one, of that, almost fifteen hundred of that was collected by county staff. We hold two clean sweep events, and that's where you can bring your hazardous material to the the center for appointments and get rid of that. We average about two thousand customers a year coming to the center that drop off appliances, tires, and pay to get rid of recycling. We run forty-two drop bin locations throughout the county that we collect daily, and we use endeavors workforce clients to help with the recycling center run the line. Great program. Parks, Trails, and Dams, we have eight boat landings we maintain, six parks, including a campground at Apple River. We have three dams, Atlas, E D Kennedy, and the Grand Clam Falls Dam. No, of course. We have four rail trails, plus we maintain Summers Lake area, the Ogren Wildlife area, the Sterling Loop, to name a few out there. So, we're we're in charge of operations and maintenance of these areas. That's what we do. I'm usually pretty short and to the point when I do a presentation, so I think I'd meet Tanya. But if you ever have questions, please, my phone is always on, reach out to me by email or phone. I'll provide lines for any question. Congratulations to the new supervisor.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you. How many years you been with the county?
Sixteen years, seven months, twenty-two days.
Eight hours.
Eighteen minutes.
Next, I have Don. You give an update on the law enforcement for the county.
Hello, I'm Don Burrows, Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department is obviously overseen by the elected chair. He's my supervisor. I'm under the Sheriff's Department. This is our organizational chart here. We have our administrative support staff, that's our records keeping. They do all the open records requests, all our police reports, expert reports, documentation that that function. Corrections, that's our jail, Uber. We partner with C J C C, and we run programs in our jail for try to reduce our recidivism. Court bailiffs, service the courts, provide bailiffs for jury trials. Patrol, that's our patrol operations, our investigations, our resource officers, courtroom security and rec control. Then we have emergency communications, that's our dispatch center, that's time and one center, that's our people that controller dispatching for EMS fire, those operations, and then we have emergency management also. So here's some names to put the the places there. Under our managers, we have two captains, we have Dale Hall, our patrol captain, Matt Leffler, our jail captain. Underneath him, he has a lieutenant to help him with supervising the jail. Going through each one, our for our staff, troll, we run about twenty-eight full-time employees, that includes five sergeants and twenty-three patrol deputies. In our jail, we have four sergeants, twenty-seven correctional officers. In the jail, we have five different posts, so I mean, we need people there to run each post for the jail. Communications, we have one supervisor underneath the communications administrator, and then ten communication officers, dispatchers. And records, we have four administrative assistants in our records department, and our emergency management is manned by Lisa McMahon. In these functions, troll, again, they do the, you know, enforcing the laws, investigating crimes. That's our school rec, our school officer, our rec officer. In our jail, we run programs, we work closely with C J C C, try, like I said before, try to reduce our recidivism. Currently, our bed population's been put all eighty and eight. We have a hundred and sixty bed jail.
Are there any rentals right now out of county?
We average about eight to twelve out of county. It's gonna go down because Burnett County, one of our bigger customers, is building a new jail. This is our mission statement of the Sheriff's Office. So our dispatch center, they dispatch for Latin villages and city police departments, teen fire departments, some full-time ambulance ambulance services. And they provide services though, you know, the state park and ward, National Park Service ward, tribal police. So we have about eighty-one full-time employees, several part-time employees.
Maybe able to take charge of that.
So currently, we have, we're gonna have two openings on patrol and three in the jail. We're hoping to hire three right now in the jail. If we get these three, we'll only be down three. It took us quite a while to find a dispatcher, we were lucky to to find a dispatcher finally to pull up. We're we're trying to handle the demands of the shortages.
Just for example, the county's association are represented to, there's some departments, county departments, that are high at twenty-eight short staff. We're very fortunate, that's the word. Any questions? How big is your budget?
Our budget is about fifteen. Again, we have eighty-one employees, but we're running a jail, so we have food services and services we have to provide to our inmates. Troll, we have lots of equipment in the highway department.
Thank you. Thank you. I I would just say now, Joe, our Corporation Council is a very good part of our organization. Malia is not here, who is our Corporation Council, the Assistant Corporation Council is Joe Lozo.
So that's me. So I'm the person that's been talking. Like Vince said, my name is Joe Lozo, I'm the Assistant Corporation Counsel, I've been here three years, Malia's been here fifteen years. She wishes she were here today, she had a personal obligation here right there, she's black spot on your screen. I'm here to talk about not just our department, I guess, or our office. Our office is only three and a half people, full-time employees, it's Malia, myself, and our paralegal slash executive assistant, Kim Mortensen. But we also have child support, which falls under the Corporation Council umbrella. That is Miss Ewing Vitalis, which, as Tanya pointed out, reports to Health and Human Services. But there are also four child support specialists that fall under that department as well. And that department establishes paternity for families where parties aren't married. They establish child support orders in cases where people are receiving services from the state. And then we also do enforcement, so holding people accountable when there is an order in place and making sure that they make the payments that are supposed to be made. They report to Corporation Council, I am the attorney that takes on a majority of the in court part of child support. So I'm there representing the state and enforcing the laws to again establish those child support obligations. Malia does the supervision of the department. And outside of that, I'm here to talk about the fact that there are different departments that don't fall under the normal divisional model but that everyone else falls under. That would be Corporation Council, the District Attorney's Office is comprised of the District Attorney and his assistant district attorneys. There are three assistants and the District Attorney. Those are all state employees, but all of the staff in the District Attorney's Office are county staff. So we, as the county, supply them with their administrative assistance, paralegals, et cetera. The judges, obviously, work here in the county, but they, again, are state employees and they're elected, but they have judicial assistants. Each of them has a judicial assistant, and again, those are county employees, and the judge's office doesn't fall under the divisional guideline either. The Clerk of Courts Office is also standalone, I don't know how many clerks there are, there are a lot. They report to Sharon Jorgensen, the Clerk of Courts, again, an elected office. But those are all county employees as well. Outside of just this building, then, there is Veterans Department, A D R C, Golden Age and Golden Age Manor, as Tanya again pointed out. Veterans and Golden Age report to Health and Human Services. I don't know who A D R C reports to. There we go. They have their own governance board. So, a little bit more about Corporation Council, because I can't really speak to District Attorney's Office or Judge's Assistance or any of those other standalones. The Corporation Council's office, again, is not only an internal resource for the county, we're also an external-facing department. So, we not only advise any of you who want to come and ask us questions, have meetings with us, again, which we are more than happy to have supervisors come in, speak to us about essential legislation that you want, what you believe you want addressed, whether things are legal, illegal, how to best draft things. As Tracy pointed out, there are ways that we have to follow the rules order for how we decide to draft resolutions. Those things need to come to us, not, you can't just come to us and ask us to draft a resolution, they have to go through the process. But we're more than happy to do that for anyone. We don't take positions on what your legislation is. We are simply there to advise on what we believe to be legal ramifications and and whether or not your legislation potentially is enforceable. So, there's that. We also advise staff and division directors on questions that they may have related policy. We, I am, along with Chad, our county's contracts and and risk management little standalone department. We look over more or less every contract that goes through the county, make sure that it meets the necessary requirements that it needs to. Again, internally, we do those things. Also, we ask as parliament, act as parliamentarian, as you all saw. When questions come up here or in any of the committee meetings, we are there to make sure that the rules are being followed as best we can. So we do that, but we also, as I said, are external. So we work with the Child Support Agency in establishing fraternity, prosecuting any people that aren't following what their orders are, what they're supposed to be doing. We also prosecute any zoning violations. We file petitions for children in need of protection and services. So we work with Tanya's department there in making sure that the children get removed from bad situations and are kept safe. We also have the unfortunate task of terminating parental rights when it becomes necessary. And we also are the representing the public interest in petitioning for guardianships for those that can no longer take care of themselves or need their matters taken care of by someone else. And we are the attorneys that take care of mental commitments, again, for people who potentially pose a danger to themselves or others. So we have a lot of different functions, we do a lot of different things. Again, we are a three-person department, we do the best we can with what we have. That's it.
Questions, Amy, you got a question?
I think this builds on what Tracy, can you just explain to me when your role fits in on a drafting resolution language for us?
Yes.
Is it before the committee or after the committee?
So, again, there's four different ways that it can happen. The first way is a supervisor goes to the chair and says, hey, Chair, I want this, I want a resolution drafted regarding this. And the chair can simply say, okay, Malia, or okay, Joe, I want you to assist Amy in drafting this resolution. That's one way. Once we draft a resolution, now because of change for where resolutions go, that resolution then would go in front of a committee, usually to be determined by the chair administrator and probably some input from our office as well. Second option is you go to the administrator, ask the administrator to tell us to draft a resolution. That would be the second way. And again, from there, from us drafting it, it would be a matter of getting it on a agenda for consideration. The third way is you bring an idea to the committee of the whole, get it on the agenda for the committee of the whole. In the committee of the whole, the committee then can direct us to, so basically, the entire board can direct us to draft a resolution. And we do that. And then there's a fourth way that I can't go to a specific committee. Go to a specific committee and have the committee, I guess, tell us to draft a resolution. So it's a matter of getting it on the agenda too, would be those last two things. That's that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe. I would just sum up by saying I'm the most blessed guy in this room because I have such a great staff. And I I mean that bottom of my heart, Cammy's my executive assistant in the office, but the the leadership team is wonderful. And I've talked to other super, or other county administrators, and I've seen it, so we're very blessed. But I will say this, they do so many different and a wide variety of things, and they're very good at it, their staffs are very good. We're getting multiple things done where it used to be everything filtered up to one person, and we did one thing at a time. Now we're doing multiple things. But I ask, and this is the challenge, we have fifteen of you here, it's very easy because they all want to help, and and it's very easy to call them and say, hey, will you do this for me, or could you look up this, could you have somebody research this? And what I ask is that you call me on those things, simply because it's harder for them to say no. And they can get spread really thin and can get crossways with people because you may have people from varying angles coming at them. That's my role is to filter that stuff out for them. What I job, my job is to implement what you set in policy, and it's to also help run the organization here so that we can function properly. So, if you have things, you can come through me, or the other way is to go to a committee. Or the other way is to go to a committee and ask that staff participator to work on a particular topic. And we're very easy to work with, I think. We'll do those.
And staff is accomplished and when they need, through the committee?
Yes. Yeah, the committee will.
Do they just bring something to the committee as a whole? Or are you doing business through the different committees?
We will do both. Usually, we'll go through each committee, but sometimes there are things that I may bring, either maybe it bubbles up from the directors, from some of you, and I'll bring to the chair and we'll talk about it at the board meeting. But normally, the process is we take something to a committee and say, here's what we're thinking, or here's what's been proposed, and we get feedback that and build on it from there.
Anybody else have any questions? It's about the answers, Amy.
I'm not sure if this is where it fits. You can decide. But in this conversation that Joe offered, I had a conversation with Malia this week, and it was about our code of ethics. And I asked her to try to explain to me this one section of it. And she, we went through it, and she interpreted one way and I interpreted both ways. And we both kind of agreed with each other. And we landed on the fact that we should look at the code of ethics of 2008 document that Court Council relies on. And so we had thought it would be best we just have that reviewed and updated. I don't know where you want to put that or what committee or where it is on the agenda, but it was a joke, you know, in that context of us talking to Court Council, that's where it came up. So that's my thought.
Well, it'd probably be come up through a resolution.
Or you just put it in agenda.
The Executive Committee does rules of order. Through our rules of order, the Executive Committee does rules of order.
And that's where it's at. Bring that up as an issue that they can confer with the Court Council.
Mr. Chair, Malia just messaged me. She stated the Executive Committee is the Ethics Committee. So I think this is something I need to probably refer back to.
It is. Yeah, that's right. It is consisting of the Ethics Committee is, the Executive Committee is, signed that.
Should we just assign them to look at this 2008 document tonight?
Tonight, assign them to look at.
Well, I mean, put it on their work plan. That isn't on our agenda.
Well, no, but I guess what you're saying is you could ask the chairman of the Executive Committee to put that on the agenda, or you could ask me, or you could ask.
Well, why don't we just put it on the agenda? The next.
That's all I wanted to say.
I'll get it out of the.
Perfect.
No problem. Okay. Apparently, we're sitting to the point where we're going to be nomination of of the department standing. And I think Bob has got a, he's usually directed us through this in a less confusing manner than normal.
Yeah, we have over the years several different ways.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know which one we're at right now.
I do. I do. Yeah, rather than you write it down, because you're going to be, I'll just use this. You'll be doing this. If I can see it. Where do you want it? Tim, if you don't mind, just one minute. We're going to have Tim in control. Scary for all of you.
They're looking for a response. I don't mind.
Well, I will start with this. This process that we developed is similar to one we used two years ago, which went rather well. It does provide some opportunity for flexibility and movement. And we'll go through that through each step. And also Chairman Luke, you're involved. I'll prompt you when you need to raise the question, and it'll be on the PowerPoint, but we'll help you out there.
I'll just help you.
Okay.
Fine.
And this is kind of planner speak, but if you all could just try, try to trust the process. We've kind of thought this through all different scenarios. We can go back and do the alternative, which is a clean slate, but I don't think we get out of here today. So anyway, we think this is fair and, again, provides an opportunity for some movements and also opportunities for the newly elected. So let's start with the Executive Committee. And we've already done some work through your adopted revision to the rules of order. We're going to go forward and use this scenario, which is, again, the county board chair and the chair of all the other standing committees. That makes up your five members of the Executive Committee. So we have confirmed this, correct? This has been confirmed through the adopted revisions of the rules of order. To understand the new Executive Committee makeup, what is slide five there? Yep, so this, we don't know the makeup of the Executive Committee right now. But we will, because the membership will be determined after each subsequent standing committee agenda. I know, for example, Environmental Services, we meet tomorrow. And on the top of the agenda is the election of officers. So we will know after tomorrow's meeting if Environmental Services is represented on the executive. Make sense? We did some work already on that. The next step in the process is, well, a little quick overview. This is just for information. This is the current committee structure and some background. Right now, there's a total of 25 positions on the five standing. And through this, there's five dedicated to the Executive Committee. Currently, there's six vacancies on the remaining committees, and Tim will display that shortly. And that's actually a product of those folks, those outgoing officials. Preferably, preferably, this is helpful. It's nice to have a maximum of two committee appointments per each supervisor. It doesn't always work out that way, and we'll show you how it's shaped out now. But, for example, Johnny B., pastor, you were on three committees.
Yeah, was the executive.
Was the executive. So he is the one on there. But anyway, ideally, like to have each member serving on two. Now, it doesn't always work out. Welcome. Here's our four new supervisors. We have Ryan Wood, we have Barbara, we have Denise, and we have Chris. Just some background there. Here's some more just information. This is the pre-spring election makeup. This is the folks that had served on one committee, two committees, then again, Johnny B. Notice the folks that didn't run again, were not reelected, those seats are now.
Yes, excuse me, but that would be the number on the standing.
Yes. Again, here's just another way of looking at it. This is a breakout of the pre-election committee appointments. Now, who serves on what committee? I just want to show you this at all. What Tim is going to do throughout this process, we're going to update this in real time. And so we'll try to add this up. And as we go through each step, you'll see movement.
That's awful, our scratch paper.
Yeah, we thought about flip chart. We brought that just in there. But then the wall space is top, too. This is our new home till for a while, so we'll make it work. So technology will help. So again, I guess, any questions? We can jump right into the process.
Jump.
All right. All right. So to start the process, the first opportunity for movement is relinquishing, okay? If you may, these are for the current tenured elected officials. If you feel you're on too many committees, if you're overburdened, maybe there's a conflict with work, here's an opportunity to relinquish one of your committees. And so basically, all you have to do, if you would like to leave the committee, you simply raise your hand, tell us which committee you'd like to remove yourself from, and we'll move forward. With that said, Jay, this is where you get involved.
Anybody, would any supervisor like to reduce the number of standing committees that are present?
Can I ask a question? So what if you're on two committees and you just want to move from one to another?
There's another opportunity to switch. That's the next step.
You want to reduce the number that you're on, first.
I still want to be on two. I don't want to reduce. I want to move from one to another.
And I would wait until the next step in the process. And so there's three steps to this process. One.
You don't have the benefit of the next page.
No, I don't.
But you will. You'd be covered with that.
Jared, there's a, the next step will allow you that opportunity to move.
Okay.
There's three opportunities. One, relinquishing, which is basically just giving up. Two, it's moving. A big ground rule to that, if you do move, you have to relinquish one of your committees. That's only fair for equitable governance and fairness to our newly elected.
This is not specific, committee-specific. Only do you want to reduce your workload.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And lastly, you'll see there'll be some remaining vacancies, and that's the last. There's still an opportunity. Does that help?
Anybody else want to reduce their load at present?
Anybody who's currently on standing committees. So the next step is switching committee assignments. Again, this is an opportunity for any current supervisor currently sitting on a standing committee to move from one standing committee to another. Big ground rule, you have to relinquish one of your committees. The new committee must be one with an existing vacancy as well. And we'll pull that out shortly. If you'd like to leave a committee, again, the same process, just simply raise your hand, say which committee you'd like to serve on, say which committee you'd like to remove yourself from. And again, if this happens, if the number of interested supervisors exceeds the vacancies, then we're going to go to. Hopefully that does. So with that said, Chairman Luke, can you help us out there?
Who's interested in switching to vacant seat or seats?
I am.
We're going to do it committee by committee.
Oh, committee by committee.
Right.
Environmental Services first, right?
Right.
Anybody on Environmental? What you're asking is, does anybody on Environmental Services want to switch? Vacancy there?
That's executive.
Yeah, that's.
Actually, there's no vacancies on Environmental Services.
You don't have an executive on there because that's not appropriate this time because each committee selects their own chairman at the first meeting. So there wouldn't be an executive, an opportunity to go on executive committee because you don't know if you're going to be the chairman or a committee.
Quick point, Bob.
Yep.
I believe with one of Supervisor Olson's changes to the rules of order, I think that then Chairman Luke also occupies one of those open spots on general government.
Correct. It'd be the fifth.
Would it be the open one? Would it be this?
Yeah.
Tim? You have one.
You took Rush out, Tim.
Yeah. So Luke, now we have two vacancies on.
I'm touching the screen, Bob.
What's that?
Stop touching the screen.
I really wanted to. So Environmental Services, no one would like to switch, correct? Tim, can you go back to the fear questions for Chairman Luke?
Who's interested in switching to a vacant seat, seats with?
General Government.
General Government. There's a vacancy there. We got Richard. Well, you would write in, and Chris, Sharon Kelly, and.
You take a Luke.
And there'll be one more.
Sharon's interested right now.
Sharon's interested. Are there any else?
Anyone else?
And then what committee would you like to relinquish?
Open Gaming Services.
You're already on that, right?
Yes.
You want to maintain that.
No, I want to.
Oh, you want to relinquish that.
Yeah, you have to relinquish that.
Where else you on?
Environment and General Government.
We'll have three open spots on Human Services. Okay, that would fill Environmental Services, correct? Right?
That's already filled.
That's done.
You know.
We go back to the question again, Jay. Can you bring up that slide again? So.
Who is interested in switching to a vacant seat on General Government? I mean, you, General Government.
Environmental Services.
You finished out, I thought we didn't fill General Government.
We did, yeah. We're sharing.
We're just asking for those that want to switch right now.
Okay.
Just switching.
All right. Human Services, same question.
More times.
Who enters in switching to a vacant seat in Public Protection and Highway, you know, committee?
Public Safety and Public Works. Anyone?
So Highway would be.
Anyone want to relinquish their existing committee to serve on Public Safety, Public? So this is the next step, which is the remaining vacant committee assignments. To do this, basically supervisors self-nominate by simply raising your hand. We're going to do this in alphabetical order as well, starting with each standing. Environmental Services. Well, in the event the number of supervisors is the same as the vacancies, which is the perfect scenario, then the county board chair makes that appointment. If there's more interest in vacancies, then all interested parties will be documented. Chair, you'll call on each nominee. Now, nominee would have an opportunity to explain their skills or whatnot to be considered to be on the committee, and then you would all. Hopefully, we don't have to go down this path, but it may happen. The highest vote tally for vacancies to new committee. Again, if there's more than one vacancy, more, repeat the process. So with that said, Jay.
Who's interested in a vacant seat on the Environmental Services Committee?
There is none.
The general government.
The general government.
Who's interested in vacant seats on the general government?
There are two open seats. This is open where we have. One open seat.
Question. So we're going to go over the, we're going to go through the open seats right now? Or are we going to throw our hats in?
This is your opportunity.
I'd like to go back to Environmental Services and throw my hat in. I understand that, but you just, you just described in your slide that if there's no vacancies and somebody wants to be on it, then they can stand up and say, why you want to be. Correct?
No.
No?
No, and there has to be a vacancy.
So, sorry. So there's no opportunity, Environmental Services is.
The only opportunities, if that was early in the process, one of the five members had relinquished their chair. Tenure folks who relinquished their, that would provide that vacancy for you to consider.
Anybody? Repeat the question, then we're. At general government, we have two vacancies.
Oh, let's do them.
One. Now you said two.
There. One of the positions Jay got built by you with the adoption of.
You're on this.
Changed to the order.
There was, there's one vacancy.
Yeah, one vacancy.
Envoy of the wood. Raise your hand. Anyone else? General Government? General Government going once, going twice?
That's it.
Okay?
Okay.
Back to the question.
Who is interested in a vacant seat on public service? Oh, Health and Human Services? Yeah, that's one I heard. We have an interest? Okay, all right. We have how many names?
Three.
Denise? No one else interested in Human Services? No, I'll, I'll take it if nobody else. And I'll raise my hand as the second committee.
Yeah, I.
Okay, do they have cookies?
Good.
But they're reading. That's as I recall it, I've been there. That might be an incentive, they have cookies. Better stay out of that. I don't need cookies.
Yeah. They're there all the time.
Who did we end up with then? Did we have three? Ryan, did you, you were.
Or yes, sir.
Yeah. You've got one more committed to get. Yeah. As bad as I am.
This angle's a little tough.
You're making it easy.
Well. Ryan. Barbara and Denise. There's one vacancy here.
Okay. Who's interested in vacancies on public safety? CJ?
For CJ?
Yeah, that's, that's what I answered to.
We have two available, correct? One.
One.
Well. Three. Are you off of that committee, Jay? I'll be off then.
You can stay on. Just can't be chair.
You can't stay on. You can't stay on, but you can.
You just can't be chair.
You can't be chair.
I love you.
You already went through them.
Yeah, you missed that step.
Well, I would stay on it, but I.
I'd just stay on it.
You can always step down if you're. I want to see what the rest of this consists of. Brad, when you were going to be on, if Jay.
No.
Well. I'll stay on it.
That's it. It was pre-named.
Oh, Mary Pym.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty.
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's.
Because I, I did, I just, I would get, I'm a 20-year veteran of the environmental. So I would be a huge captain. Not to mention certification. That's okay, I can, I can work at the. I can work at the group, at the committee as a whole.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate because that's the one, the one standing committee that didn't have any vacancies. Either through, through the election process or.
There are other committees that this, that this county is looking at for outside people to serve on.
West Central Regional Planning.
There's all kinds of ones. There's West Cap. There's, there's a number of different, not different committees, you can certainly be an asset. I'm sure of that.
That's actually the next agenda item, and I think this is going to talk about that. There's other.
Denise.
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 Just one outside comment. On the agenda, there is the supervisors to speak with any agenda item. So you can either call it or be on Zoom or come be a part of the committee each.
Maybe there's other committees that you will be considered for, I'm sure of that. Okay.
But with my, hey.
Go ahead, you may.
The, after you've dealt with the standing committees, you'll see there are a lot of other committees and, and assignments or appointments for supervisors and for private citizens. That's what this document is right here. We're not, I'm recommending we not do that tonight because this is an opportunity for each of you to go through this and to say what you're interested in and to let Mr. Luke or myself or both of us know what you're interested in. And, and then next month, we will go through the appropriate process that's listed here. In some cases, I appoint and that's it. In some cases, the chairman appoints and that's it. And others, the full board's approval. So Tammy Peterson, my expert on all these committee assignments, she wrote down in here what the process is. So, but you'll see here, ADRC, the West Central Regional Planning Commission, those types of things. And if you're, any of you exist as a former supervisors, if you want off of anything, you can let us know as well. And either I or Jay or an experienced supervisor can tell you what some of these standing committees are.
We'll find if an experienced supervisor can answer that question.
Mr. Kirk, I have a question.
Yeah.
Should we add P tag to this? Because we need to replace a supervisor on there and let up, let them choose it. We should add P tag on this list, maybe?
I think it's good. And if you recall, we passed the resolution last time. And in that resolution, it had Amy and Chris Nelson on, on that committee that Chris is no longer here. So I would think it would be a chairman's proposal and then the full board would accept who the other, who the other supervisor would be on the P tag.
You just, you had a meeting last, yes?
No, we haven't met since about a month and a half. I'm just thinking, just to tell the new people what P tag is, it should be on the list if they're interested in pressing it.
Right. It is the Parks and Trails Advisory Group. This was really a horrific idea. Bob came to me a couple of years ago and said, you know, rather than fight over every single foot of every single trail about what we're going to do with it, let's bring people from all the different user groups together that can work on coming up with a comprehensive plan. And, and the end result was a plan that said, let's give something to everybody. So sometimes you had to give up a little bit if you got something else someplace else. And we tried to balance the committee so that we had people from all the different user groups. We even had two supervisors who were kind of looking at things from a different perspective, kind of balanced it out. And now Chris is gone, so now we'll look for someone else to step in his way.
Okay.
So we'll add that on here.
All right. Do that.
And in fact, though, just so you know, two, that committee completed their master plan, uh, which was their primary responsibility. And so now they're, I guess you could say, taking a pause or whatever, but they will deal with issues as they come up or if we need their expertise. It's not going to be a regular monthly meeting, we don't think, like.
Can you get, can you, you have any comments on the master plan that went to the state? Or that committee?
Well, no, they, it. The total, the total master plan was really our strategy, which was to enhance our trail system throughout the county for different uses. So the ATV Intensity Park is an example up in the Sterling township. The Algren area and the Balsam Lake branch is going to be a great place for cross-country skiing and possibly, I can't remember, oh, bike, biking through St. Cory Falls, you know, and working up the Gandy on that. So we're trying to enhance all the different user groups throughout the county, not just one.
My question was, did part of that have to be accepted by the state or was I wrong?
No, you're thinking of probably the Stour Master Plan.
Just the single master plan. I think they read that today or, I don't know if we got canceled. Did they read it today or not? It was.
All right, agenda item.
It'll be an update that probably.
Thank you. Well, okay, actually, that'll be added, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
For next month.
Uh, so you're going to get that to every supervisor, so they can make a choice one way or another?
They, they have this, and, and I would say the process is to let you or me know what you're interested in.
Anybody not understand that?
Yes. There's some, and, and then it's the chairman or, you know, depending on the situation. Usually it's the chairman appointing.
Right.
You all to the committees or the groups that you want.
Correct. Now, the standing committees, they're approved as, as they were, we vote on it, do they not? So everybody's got. Everybody that has been assigned to a standing committee should be appointed. For the minutes, is that how it is?
That was your, yes, that is your role.
We call for a consensus or a, a voting on the, the standing committees as presented?
You want, yes, Jay, do you want us to pull back up?
Yeah. Well, I want them to look at it so that there are no others voting on.
You want to have a vote confirmed at the standing.
That's what I'm asking. You have to vote to confirm this. Standing committees as, as presented, ones you're looking at, so. Everybody understand what we've got, what we're voting on? Is that correct? This clerk, you got that for.
Fast question.
Go ahead.
So what would the process have been like had I not raised my hand for Health and Human Services? Because I wasn't aware of like the additional committees beyond that? The only reason I ask is because my expertise, I raised my hand to fill the role, and my expertise in Health and Human Services is certainly not very high.
It will be.
So that's why I asked what my, what it would have looked like had that spot remained open.
Well, it would have, because I would have taken it if you hadn't. Somebody, surely, I've, I've never seen that happen in 20 years.
Someone else would have assumed.
Yeah. And you, and you not said you would take it, I would have taken it.
Somebody, or somebody else would have grabbed.
Only because, yeah, I mean, it was kind of out of necessity. Like, is that something you'd be interested in?
No, no, you, you try it, and if you want to back out, I'll take a shot at it. How's that?
I'd stay on it again. It's a different, another thing I'd like to be.
And that was part of my, like I said, that's why I said it was out of necessity, just because of, you know, the time, the time part. I, I'm, I'm not concerned about the interest part of it. It's the, it's the time, it's the time.
I mean, I'm serious, I would stay on.
Let's vote on the ones we can always make a change. See if he likes it, see if he's got time element. Forms with his personal stuff. All right, everybody.
Need a motion to approve your nominations, the way they look.
Sounds appropriate to me. Need a second on that. Second row, rowdy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, this is our standing committees as, as presented for our next term. Unless changed in a midterm. Okay, now you've got appointments to consider on citizen members to standing committees, other county committees, boards, and commissions. You have a list of.
We, uh, citizen committees come up as they are due. And there, there really aren't any for this month. Now, next month I'll have a couple. And then I also had one last month that I just need to announce, and then you all can vote. But that'll be coming up under administrator's appointment.
Go ahead. Why don't you bring it up?
Following the agenda?
Thirteen. So. Okay, all right.
I have one question, Jay.
Then, uh, we're standing. Go ahead.
So for appointments, we're going to have to have Lake District also. Should he have it on the, on this list?
And just so you know, the Lake District.
Yeah.
Those. The Environmental Services Committee by state statute is, is the one who nominates those people. And then it comes to the board and the board approves. Now, what the board did last time basically was say, if the Lake District is in your area, you're on it. Unless there was some exception where they said somebody else.
Yeah, if it's in your district.
So. There are only a couple of those.
Where you live on it?
Oh, you don't have to live on it. If it's in your district.
It's in your district.
Then you're going to be appointed to it, yeah.
You don't want to miss this opportunity too.
Then you would be on this.
Brad was on it before, so, okay. That'll come up. All right, so that'll be, Senator, next meeting. Now, the next round is proposer, the resolution ordinance. This one I'm involved in a little bit, but I don't think I have to step down in order to. To address this, I'll let the residue, the resolution stand for itself. It's pretty simple and we're going in what's asked for. I think you're going to, I think you could stay as acting chair but not vote. Well, it's, it's a, I mean, if you read the ordinance, it's. Of the resolution, it's, it's, it's just simple enough to, there's a need. This is for future needs and something that this county is.
Yeah.
Is experiencing.
Jay, go ahead. We need a two-thirds vote to bring it to the floor to discuss because it hasn't been through a committee.
Hasn't been through a committee. It's going to require a two-thirds vote. It didn't go to many this, this specific resolution.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion. Made by Brad, seconded by. Arkan and, and I guess. Okay, by Russ. Now, any discussion on that, it's, it's pretty. Simple.
There's a piece of property.
There's a piece.
We got.
There's simply a piece of property sitting out on County Road C. That's not being utilized by the, the county. It's got up in a triangle. Thing and the county has no use for it whatsoever. I felt. I'm the chairman of Lincoln Town, obviously, presently, but. I felt that that is in its location that's instrumental in future improvement of, of. Emergency services, whether it be a fire substation or whether it be. Something utilizing ambulance services. There's going to be a need for that. We're going, we're running into a situation where in the not-too-distant future, we're going to be experiencing. A definite need for full-time services, whether they be fire to a certain degree or whether they be emergency ambulance service. So we're going to be, need more space. That particular location is right at the north end of Wapagast, which covers a number of miles. That are not accessible except from roads going around the lake. So you can't cross the lake in any spot for, like you can in a river and things like that with bridges. So it's, it's in a kind of a nomad's land, which takes longer to get to. So I just. Thought that as a town chairman, I would accept that property for Lincoln Town to be utilized for the. Needs that may be in the future that are designated by the resolution itself. And that's, I, but I, we do need a two-thirds vote because it didn't go through a committee at this time. We wanted to improve it because there's some. Movement being made at the present time with meetings and things that are. That the emergency services and the, the district, the whole southern part of the county and including part of the northern part of the county that's. Starting to coordinate, coordinate some of the services. It appears that, in fact, the meeting I was at yesterday. The ambulance service in Amory is, is. Is merging with Northern. There will be 20 different. Nineteen or 20, we're not real sure. Going up to Lock and Frederick and that, down to Amory and Fairfield and Lake. And then this whole area will be under one. Emergency ambulance services. So the efficiency will be hard to understand.
Mr. Chair, did we do the two-thirds vote so we can discuss?
Not yet.
Okay.
So you need me to do that?
We needed that before we discussed.
We need to have a roll call vote so it's.
But we needed the two-thirds before we did.
Well, we'll need a roll call for two-thirds vote. But all we're doing is this is in the special stage, two-thirds has not been applied.
So someone needs to move to suspend the rules. Needs to be seconded and then there's a two-thirds vote on suspending the rules.
To discuss.
In order to discuss. No point of order has been made by anyone, so that, it hasn't become.
Sharon just made it.
It hasn't become a big issue yet, but if Sharon is making a point of order, then.
I am.
Okay, then everything's.
So parliamentarian, we'll need a motion and or, and a second.
Suspend the rules.
Motion made by CJ.
I'll second.
Seconded by Johnny Bonner Price. And then now we need two-thirds.
Roll call.
Or roll call, that's the enough to. Yes.
Okay. Oh, great.
Yes is the clarification, yes is.
Is this.
As presented in the reg.
Just suspend.
Just to suspend the rules right now. So we can discuss.
We got it.
You might need to be really.
Skip the first part. Yeah.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
He's no longer on the call.
All right. Ryan Wood. Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Ian Rowe.
Yes.
Barbara Mc, McAfee.
Yes.
Karen Kelly.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Milton.
Yes.
Niece Lally or Prey.
Yes.
Russ Arkan.
Yes.
CJ Simone.
Yes.
Tom Bonner Price.
Yes.
Chair Luke, would you care to vote?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Do you have the discussion that isn't?
So now we should have another motion to.
Now, Brad.
Brad made a motion to. Seconded by. Russell. Now there can be discussion.
All in favor. Against discussion.
We need a two-thirds. All right. Now it's simple majority on, simple majority on the vote now.
That's what I, oh, that's what I thought. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Vote the same sign. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, hell breaks loose.
That's a good example, a good education on why it is to pull through committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, confirmation of appointments by. Administrator.
Okay, holiday is kind of confusing in this meeting, but this came up per. Person's time slot on the aging advisory for A D R C. Miss Rose Cromroy, who's been on the committee. Lauren Neve, our A D R C head, has supported this wholeheartedly. So I reappointed her to that. Now coming to the board, the board has to approve that appointment. I'm over her approval.
Almost.
Motion made and seconded to approve the, the appointment of Rose. Did you catch that? Do you want to know who seconded it?
Yeah, but who was the person seconded?
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. See you.
That's it.
That's it for tonight, right? Was Joe Dylan on the human service, or the, was he on that board?
No, no, it's Amy and Tracy and me.
The chairman's reporting you for the. For the month, I think you've already witnessed what you. So I also spend that. Need a report on substance abuse, there a report.
You get the administrator report. Administrators.
Oh, administrator, I'm sorry. I thought you were already talking.
Okay, I'll make this quick as I can.
Thank you.
You all have seen, the building is under construction. The upgrade is going through great work by Mo and his crew and all the direction for getting things organized. It is a work in progress. It is a little bit of a mess. It's going to cause some hardships on people. So I ask your forgiveness now, so to speak, but it's going well. Most of the work is currently being done on the first floor. But they're shutting off parts of the building and moving around. We have found some asbestos. We think it's contained to the first floor. So it's a little mitigation there that we have to deal with. We will be having our board meetings here at least throughout the summer and we'll probably move it extended on because of the work that's been in there. But we're going to get some good work done. We have signage up everywhere over there. Where to go and where not to go. And it's kind of funny, you can just sit there and we can look out our window and people just walk, they drive straight in there, park where they always park, they walk straight in that front door. And it doesn't stop them. So we are trying different approaches on the signs. We may have to hire somebody with a club to keep people from walking under.
That'd be an administrative job.
Yeah. There, you don't want to wimp like me. The flu. You all know about COVID? There's actually another flu that the paper probably read something released a press release yesterday or today. The avian influenza or bird flu. They have discovered it in wild birds in Polk County, Barron County, a few others around here. We're keeping our eye on that, much like we keep our eye on COVID. COVID numbers dropped dramatically in this past week. They creeped up a little bit. You're hearing it nationwide. But it has, it has remained low. The good news is, is we're not getting many people in the hospital. We did just have a few go in today. So we'll keep our eye on that. Key projects that are getting kicked off right now. Lois met with the S E H, the engineering firm to organize, plan and develop the project involving the recycling center. So we're starting on that. And then Clam Falls Dam, Ayers and Associates has been awarded the engineering. Role for that and they will begin. Working on the design, the redesign of that. I expect the bids for that work will go out probably next fall or spring. And then next summer we'll have it finished. Bear Society, Mr. Loso has reached out to be bear attorney. Because of what's happening right here, we couldn't meet right away. We want to make sure that we have an executive committee. That next, if you recall, the executive committee was going to represent. The county when they meet with the representatives from the fair. So Mr. Loso's reached out and they're going to find a suitable date for both of us. We're keeping an eye on the economy. We all do, right? And here the county's no different. We're keeping an eye on what the trends are. Inflation is surging. Which means costs are going up, interest rates are going up. I just give you that warning. But, but we are on top of it and we constantly stress to our staff, watch what you spend. Mo informed me that it's a County Road D project. That project alone, the cost of asphalt has gone up $150,000 just for that project. So we do have to be careful, be aware. Sales packs, which is a nice chunk of change we get every year, like four and a half million last year. But it had been surging this year, still strong so far. Not as high as last year, but last year was an unbelievable year. So we're going to monitor that because if, if the economy tanks, we would expect that to come down as well. Finally, want to introduce you to our new public information and communication specialist, Claire Johnson, has been hired. She's there in the back. And very excited because this is a new role for the county. This is a person who will. Kind of be our representative with the media. Will also be focused on getting information from the county to the public, county to the media, and then also taking information back. So this is a new position. She can be working closely with the website and making sure not just outside, but also to our employees. So it's kind of a new position. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you. You have any questions? Oh, now. Substance abuse, do we have any report on substance abuse?
So the sheriff's office due to staffing wasn't able to get the stats together for this month, so we're going to provide a joint report. In April and May, but considering there's one-fourth of the data, I didn't want to create a report without it, so we'll give a joint report.
Problem. Do you want any supervisor announcements? From meetings that you may have attended that you may want to share any information with us at this time or. Doug, what have you got?
I have attended the Round Lake Rehabilit, Rehabilitation District meeting. And their big issue is they want to do an ALM treatment. And expense that they have to. They have grants, but they're talking 1.7 million, I think, for the lake population to come up with that much money and they're just in the. Seasons right now. And then I attended the Bone Lake Management District and they're just moving along in the same direction, looking at what they can do to improve the lake quality. So that's about it.
I attended the Deer Lake Association meeting. They, they invited me to come. They were talking about the 911. Address changing and I worked with Jason and being able to answer their questions and he helped me through that. And they were real appreciative to be able to get their questions answered, so that was good. And then I attended the. Polk County Museum Board meeting. They're getting ready to open. We start school tours in two weeks, I think. There's a lot to get done, but, but the museum opens on Memorial Day weekend. So they're excited. There's been a lot of people volunteering. They started the bathrooms.
Yep.
Yep. Hopefully they were there today. So that was good. So that's, it's looking good. So if you get a chance to come out, opening day memorial, memorial weekend.
Anybody else? I attended three town, private town board meetings, special meeting. And their people meeting. And I personally want to thank. All you board members and people. I had 50 treatments, radiation treatments down in Casper, Arizona. Got a lot of calls and prayers and best wishes and very humbly appreciated a lot of that. And I think everything worked. Doc told me, he says, you know, I think you're going to approach him something else. So I believe him. Thanks again. God bless. Anybody else? Okay. Who do you adjourn? Most of the adjourned by half the time. Graduating the Zooked by.
So, so we're here, right?
Yes.
We need to get upstairs.
Yeah, downstairs is.